This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this January 29th, 2021 Extension Workshop to our field trip to order at 12:30 PM, meeting called to order. It'll just be for half an hour, 12:30 to 1 o'clock. And at this time, I'll turn it over to city or to Stephanie, city recorder, and she'll describe what this next half hour is going to be like. So Stephanie, it's all yours.
All right, this work session is being held to review what occurred on the site visit. The city council took part in at 11 o'clock this morning. They visited Louisiana Avenue and I Street to review what it is like when there is no sidewalks, curb, or gutter installed with new developments. This is in an effort to gather information for when they discuss the waiver of remonstrances and how they would like to proceed. They did not deliberate. They did ask questions of which staff will, we will review that here so that they can ask staff those questions in order for us to bring information to the work session that we will hold in the future regarding how to proceed with either requiring sidewalks, storm and gutter, or storm and curb to be installed or to continue as we are now. Again, no, no decisions were made. They did not deliberate about how they wanted to proceed. They reviewed the development in the area and asked questions about depth of gravel or gutters, nothing in regard to how they want to proceed.
Thank you, Stephanie. We can open it up for, oh, go ahead, Stephanie.
At the tour, staff was present, including city reporter Borst, city administrator Josette Mitchell, city engineer Robert, as well as counselors Williams, counselor Allen, counselor Webb, and Mayor Hobart. Counselor Potter was not present, nor is she present at this work session.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. One thing I really liked is Josette's comment about developing Louisiana first and then pinpointing off that grid as we branch out both north and south, I guess, off Louisiana. I thought that was a pretty good comment.
So you guys didn't hear this conversation, but Robert said a simple topo and elevation shot would take about a month. And if we wanted a full developed plan for north, south, and the connection, it would take anywhere between two and three months of their time to do that kind of planning. He was talking to me kind of on the side when you guys were talking, so. The other thing that was a question that I just measured and answered to is all of those streets are 60-foot right-ofways, including Louisiana. So all the cross streets are full-on 60-foot right-ofway.
Counselor Allen.
Josette, when you say topo and elevations, is it just that? Or are they going to draw in drainage and that kind of stuff? Or is it just topo and elevations and you're talking that many man-hours at 200 an hour?
No, it doesn't mean that there's a month worth of man-hours. It just means with the work they currently have, the one month would be the elevation of the corners and a small amount of topo. The bigger plan would take two to three months with the current work they have. And that would have storm drainage, connectivity, and all of that in it.
Okay, and then who puts the corners in? Is that something we'd have to have the survey markers come out and pay them to do?
Yeah, so they would network with KLS to come in because KLS has all the monuments in the area. They'd network with them when they needed information. So it would be two bills, one from the engineer, one from KLS.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further information you guys would like staff to bring to the work session where you guys discuss how you want to proceed?
Just cost of what Josette said for me, kind of a rough cost. That's going to come out of our pocket to get it started, right?
Yep. I'll ask them for the cost of the simple version and the larger version.
Correct. And then I'd also like to know if they have a corner lot. If we were to say you have to put sidewalks in, would that be both sides? Or I heard something about house facing what street, but doesn't do you any good if you're wanting to put a sidewalk down in Louisiana and they're not going to do it, or if that the city would have to do that, or what?
Okay, I think we're going to find that in code if we look through it, but of what's currently required.
I always, I guess, assumed if a corner lot, you aid it both directions, but maybe I'm wrong.
We can bring that to the meeting.
Is it too premature or early to look into developing Louisiana all the way through? Right now?
What do you mean by developing, Rick?
Well, putting the street clear through.
Like in finished with sidewalks and asphalt and everything?
Yeah.
Probably because I think the safest way to use our money would be to get the plan together, then get that 500-foot section connected, and then maybe go for like the SCA grant be the paving part of that.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't know that we're going to have 100 or so thousand to pave it.
Yeah.
And then another.
Oh. Dale Webb, go ahead.
Well, and the other part of that equation is there's going to be a lot of construction in there. It'd be foolish of us to pave that and then be tearing into it. We'd just be wasting our money. But, but I agree with you, Rick, that we probably should be exploring the idea, which we're already talking about, punching it through there and making it to standard for a gravel road, something, you know, because I think that makes, that makes sense for now. And then, and then once it gets so much development, then we probably pull the pin and get it paved through there. And deciding where we go with this sidewalk requirement, that might be when we pull the pin and run the sidewalk down at the same time.
Well, that was kind of my thinking, Dale, that, that, you know, you kind of finish down below and then, and then you have something to work with where you can line up your drainage dishes and, and get those all in line. Because if you, I don't know. You want everything to line up. And I like the idea of having a, a solid, nice road to base off and, and shoot your grade off and everything like that, so. But maybe not, maybe it wouldn't take too much to straighten that little curve out there at the bottom and punch it through with more gravel. I don't know.
Do you want staff to bring more information on that?
Well, I think we were charging kind of, we are, you guys already asked us to kind of get that, that plan together. And so we can get the members from the engineers for the, for the elevation topo and then what it would cost to do a detailed one. And then maybe you guys decide which version you want to go forward with. Because the surveying where it's at and the, and the taking down a few trees and straightening it out, we could easily do that as staff. The only tricky part's going to be when we go to do elevations and stuff, we'll need the engineer and surveyor.
Yeah. Anything else for staff? Counselor Webb.
So I'm a little confused about our standards, our road building or whatever standards we throw. So, so, you know, we were discussing those culverts that we were seeing, and some of us feeling those aren't the best culvert. So the comment back was, well, if they ruin their covert, then they got to replace their covert. Then, then my pushback is why are we in the business of having a standard to begin with? What's, what's the premise of us having a city standard to build these things to? Isn't that so there we're not, the people aren't back in there redoing work? Is, it's kind of like building a house. You have a certain code you got to build it to?
I guess I'm not following. So they are required to put in those culverts to the code. And we're kind of assuming from what we think that it won't stand up to whatever we think it wouldn't stand up to, right?
Correct, but I, I, what is, what is our standard? I think our standard is a size. And I'm not sure that, you know, it's just like piping, you know, they're scheduled 20 and they're scheduled 40, you know, and there's a big difference in between. And, and it just appeared that those little flimsy culverts they got in there are the, are the cheap route. And we already seen the one was oval, the end of one driveway. And you can step on it and deflect it with your foot. So it just, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. We probably have a standard, but maybe our standards need a little upgrade there as to more specific to what we're requiring.
So that's what I was trying to tell you guys. Our standard reference, the, hold on, let me, I'm trying to search it while I'm saying it. They reference the national standard, so they're not like written down and become old. It's going to send you to the national standard for that.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I'm trying to pull it up right here so I can give you more detail. Hold on a sec. So because that's the only nice thing about our standard from other people's is it isn't in work. It, it says this is the standard and you will find that here, right? So it isn't like a, they, they don't get typically as outdated as some people's, I'm sure.
Okay.
So let me see here. Trying to search for what it says. So it says standard drawings relevant to this section may be found in the most current specifications in addition of the APWA standard specification for public works construction, Oregon chapter. So it's, it's always upgrading when the regulations get tighter. That's straight out of the storm drainage section. So and I'd have to go in there and see what they're requiring for the standard. But that's what the engineers are making sure is happening, that they're meeting all those new updated standards.
So, so it's the responsibility of the engineer to assure that that product they're putting in the ground meets the code?
Right. Meets the code as it's referenced in our code, yeah.
Okay.
So looking to see if there's any more detail in here.
You might want to.
It doesn't even say the, the thickness of the pipe. That's going to be referenced in the most up-to-date version.
Any other questions for staff or comments?
Rick, can you hear me?
Yes, Grant.
I got a great big white spot in the middle of my screen. I can see JR and half of myself, and I got a big white spot in the middle of my screen. I don't know how to get it out of there.
Oh, yeah, I could hear you okay, and we could see you.
Okay, good. Well, I'm here, I've been here, I just, I'm here.
Okay.
Turn on a light.
No, I got too much light.
Too much backlight, yeah.
So Grant, what we're doing is if you have any questions that you would like staff to bring answers to, to the work session where we discuss how to move forward, that came from our little walk that we did a little bit ago, now's the time to. Let us know what you would like us to bring.
Well, I have the same questions that have already been voiced.
Counselor Allen.
Josette, could you tell us or bring back to the next meeting of who would be responsible? Let's just say we said sidewalks had to start going in. Who is going to be responsible to check elevations and say, I know you, they always come up and check. Yes, you're good to pour. Would that be third party or our city or both? That's kind of what I'm wondering.
Okay.
A long time ago, when I used to put them in here, it was Public Works, Vernonia would come by and go, oh, okay.
Yeah. I have that question. I believe it, it would be both, but I'll have to double check that.
Counselor Webb.
So I think we should already have this for the work session, but you were going to bring us back more information on fee and lieu, the other cities, how they were doing that, and, and maybe flesh that out a little floor, the, for the pros and cons of that concept, so. Okay, I see you nodding your head, so you got that coming to us.
We got that on there.
All right.
And I think we're already talking about looking at the SD, SDC fees?
And potentially increasing them?
Yeah, I thought you said something that we hadn't, ours were pretty low. I've heard that comment a few times, and maybe do a comparison also on SDC fees. That kind of ties into this, too.
I can have engineering bring back information on that, too, because they're the ones who would be heavily involved with that with the city legal.
So would this mean to be another work session then, after we gather some more information?
Yeah, so we were hoping you guys could come up with a date for one that we aim to have all this stuff to, because you currently don't have one scheduled or set up.
But I have, I have to see when engineering's not available before we schedule it. Because they're going to be there.
So would you want to bring that back on Monday night with, in new business? And Stephanie Forrest?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or evaluation? Did anyone learn something today that they didn't know before we went up there today?
One thing I noticed is that the street that we walked down that, that had the houses on it already, as I was going back to my house, I realized when you go through town, there are places where the curb and the sidewalk touch each other. There's other places where there's three feet of grass. There's places where there's six feet of grass. There's just, it's such a hodgepodge. I don't see how we could maintain any distance between the curb and the sidewalk up there where we walked through, because there's just not enough room.
Josette.
So Grant, some of those are because certain streets are arterial and they're required to have a planter strip.
Right.
Or they're a collector, or they're just plain residential where there, no planter strip is required. So it really depends on the width of the road, what that sidewalk profile looks like in the transportation, transportation system plan.
Yeah.
So if it's a, if it's a street where a whole bunch of people are coming, typically those have the planter strips, but street residential does not.
Well, I noticed a very, very wide variety of applications. I mean, just, just there on state. It's, and then, of course, there's a lot of places, you know, where there's, it's very poorly defined, in my opinion.
Yeah. And some of, some of the hodgepodge also comes from just age of when the homes were built.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So maybe.
There's really only like three or four options, depending on what the street classification is and then the zone and stuff, so.
Well.
It should only be three or four.
If we put in curbs and sidewalks, we're going to have to plan for what the future will hold and not just what the street is right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, the full right-of-way build-out is what you plan for.
Yeah, you got to plan for the big deal instead of just the current.
And were you on when I said that all those cross streets, HIG, are going to be 60 feet right-of-way?
I did not hear that, no.
Yeah, I measured it. They're all plotted to have 60-foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
So that.
It's 50 feet, it's 50 feet where we were today?
No, it's 60.
Oh, it is 60? Oh, my.
That's probably why he poured, only poured that first couple panels of their driveways, because the right-of-way probably goes on the backside of those electrical boxes.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty narrow to meet the standard that is set.
That's pretty narrow.
Well, if you go 30 feet from the middle of the road, like you said, that's pretty close to the concrete. And then you go, you got 30 feet on the other side and 15 feet of it isn't even there. It's dropped off into, into the lot. So we're working with a very narrow roadway.
Right, but if you built the sidewalks, they would be at the edge of the right-of-way. So they'd have to fill that, that downhill side of I Street would have to backfill in if we were going to require sidewalks.
So the current road would extend about, oh, maybe 20 feet? The center line would move over to where it drops off now?
The current road would extend by almost 40 feet.
Yeah.
It's only 20 feet wide right now, and the right-of-way is 60 feet.
Right, so yeah, there's a lot of.
Josette, wasn't that just a half-street development?
Yeah. And he did that, the 20-foot kind of high gravelled area where we aren't thinking it's right-of-way, you know, the yards we weren't thinking is right-of-way is actually right-of-way. So he came out about 30 feet. The downhill edge of that gravel is 30 feet from the property lines of those homes. That would be considered the half-street improvement.
So that, the, the, the current street is, is actually going to shift towards the south about 20 feet?
Let me share my screen real quick.
I sure wish I could see everybody's face. Does anybody know how to get rid of that?
Do you see the current width of that is only about 20 feet?
23?
Yeah, I can't see what you're adding. I can see JR on the right, but.
Dude, I don't know what that white spot is.
I don't either. It's driving me crazy.
Can you un-share your picture and then re?
Presenter.
Share your picture?
Down at the bottom, it says, when I click on the screen, then it says to share your screen, ask the organizer to make you a presenter.
Don't do that.
No, I meant your camera. Close down the camera and then turn the camera back on again. Can you do that?
I'll try that, let's see.
Are we still covered in white?
Yeah.
Huh.
I, I don't know what's going on. Weird. I can hear you, though.
You could try logging out and coming back in, Grant.
Okay, let me try that.
I'm going to hear a second anyway.
Yeah, I'm not going to, no, we're almost done.
Well, we have about five more minutes.
Yeah, I can put up with the.
And if you want to pop in here, Grant, we can look at it on one of these computers, too.
Okay, thank you.
So Josette, and a lot of, the homeowners are typically responsible for the curb and sidewalk. Is that correct in a lot of places?
Yes.
So is it, I mean, we could always say you're putting in sidewalk and you're paying a fee and lieu for curb until the city is ready to put the street in.
Well, typically, they would do it all at one time. Are you meaning just curb and no sidewalk?
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on if you're going to have a planter strip, which I assume there'd be at least a three footer through there if a 60-foot right-of-way or more, maybe even a six-foot planter, but.
Yeah, I don't know that the, I'd have, I have to pull up. I think code isn't going to require that in that residential zone, but let me find it here.
Hi, Rick.
Okay, so roadway, design improvement, sidewalk, so local. Let me to go to the, hold on. Trying to get to a picture.
And the reason I say that is because like Dale was saying, it could be a year or two or three before we're ready really to do Louisiana, but we don't, we might, as a council, might not want to wait that long for sidewalks or something, you know?
Yeah.
If they paid the footage and the fee, we have a contractor come in later and just put all the curb in on Louisiana all at once.
So why don't we, why doesn't staff bring you back kind of the zones and then a cross-section of what the sidewalk in those zones requirement would look like?
Right.
Okay. So you can see where it's required to have a planter strip and where it's not.
Josette, right when we were leaving, I went up and talked to Robert Watts a little bit. And he talked about developing in the city of Hillsborough, they, he mentioned something of how they, on a new development, they, they set up a special fund just for the sidewalks and the, these drainage and street improvements. And then once the street was in, they, they had the money for it. In other words, they didn't have to, it was already set aside in a reserve fund. Could we possibly do something like this? And would that, like in fee of lieu, would that kind of help with that process or?
Well, you guys kind of discussed two different versions of the fee and lieu. One was that it would be used on the site who paid for it, and one was to use it on sidewalks you guys deemed necessary. But I think we could look into that, but then that decision of how that money would be used is really up to you guys as councils to determine whatever the plan will be.
Okay.
Josette, I have another question.
Go ahead, Counsel Williams.
You said there's already sewer in there, right, obviously?
Yeah, down Louisiana.
Well, what about that side street that we walked on? That's obviously got sewer, too. Where, where is that located on the current road?
Down the middle.
It's right down the middle?
Yep.
Okay, so if the middle of the road moved. Okay, so if the middle of the road moves south 20 feet, where's that going to put the sewer? Is that going to be under the sidewalk?
I can tell you exactly where that during our next meeting. I have to look at our plan.
Yeah, I don't think so, Grant, because if you remember right, the beginning of the road is behind those electrical uprights.
Okay.
So it's still very centrally located. On the two streets H and G that we looked at, the sewer actually comes down the center of the alley in between the two. The houses go back to back.
Right.
And the sewers, they're coming to the back of their properties with sewer. So it's not even in H or G there, it's in the alley, actually.
So there will be arterials that will be for like drainage control that will head into that sewer?
No, so the storm will come out the front to the road, to the actual listed road, but the sewer is coming to the back of each house's property down the middle alley.
Okay.
And if you, if you pop in here at some point, I can pull up and better explain it with the map.
Well, when our meeting's over, I'll come over if you're available.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? If not.
Do you want me to read back what we added?
Sure.
Okay, so that's going to bring you guys back the cost of a simple version, which would be corner elevations and a little bit of topo along Louisiana. Then we're also going to bring back the cost of a more detailed version, a whole plan with storm identified and the elevations, et cetera. We're going to look into what code says about corner lot requirements for sidewalks. We're going to look at who would be responsible to check elevations and get you kind of that process laid out about how that works when someone's required to put in a sidewalk, who's the inspector or who's signing off on that? We're going to have the engineers help us with looking at the SDC comparisons and potential increase. And then we're going to bring you the sidewalk cross-sections in each zone, the requirements based on zone or what kind of street it is, a collector, an arterial, et cetera. Anything else?
That sounds like a lot.
Okay, well, if there's no other, we'll go ahead and adjourn this virtual meeting at 1:05 PM. And we'll see you Monday night at 7 o'clock, and have a good weekend. And we'll add the future workshop on this in our agenda on new business on Monday night, so.
Thanks, Rick.
All right.